I call this meeting to order. We'll begin as usual with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, with the same hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just where did you call the roll, please? Council President Sudan Souter.
Here.
Councilperson Joseph Decker.
Here.
Councilperson Nerum Tubaka.
Here.
Councilperson Andrew Zell.
Here.
Councilperson Brian Mather.
Here.
Also in attendance, City Administrator Anthony Enes Tenschello, City Treasurer James Wissman, City Clerk and Science Coordinator Courtney Taylor, Chief Corvus Richard McCain, Building Official Jeffrey Berstrom, City Sales Officer Max Wald. Thank you. Okay, the first item is the minutes. We have several. The first one is the minutes of the May 7th executive session, which merely records the fact that we had that meeting. Are there any comments or corrections from council?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Okay, a second?
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those minutes are approved. The next one is the minutes of the budget workshop of Thursday, May 7th. Are there any comments or corrections for that one?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Okay, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved. And the next set is the minutes of the May 14th regular meeting. Are there any comments or corrections to that one from anyone? I do have one, but I want to see if anyone else. On the ninth page, second, in the middle of the page, Council President Souter responded to questions and there are some bullet points. In the second bullet point, it says about the street sweeping and the warnings and so forth. It says the warnings will be issued to vehicles that have not moved. Only one side of the street will be swept at a time. Odd numbers, one week, and even house numbers a different week. It should be day. Like Wednesday, I think it is, and Thursday, at least on my street. It may be different on other streets. But it's different days within the same week. So that's the only correction I have. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the final set of minutes is the budget workshop from May 15th. Are there any comments or corrections to those? Motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are all approved, thank you. Okay, the first item tonight is, after that, is the Treasurers' Report. And that will be followed immediately by the report from our auditor of the Audit of the Fiscal Year 23, which ended last June 30th. So Mr. Wissman, if you'll give your report, and then we'll call up Mr. DeFroga for his.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to remain seated and get mine. Everyone can hear me, I assume. The unaudited numbers that I have as of May 31st, total cash in accounts, $11,196,941. And those funds are made up of the unrestricted funds, and the restricted funds, $2223,890. Now, with that said, the activity that we've had through May, May 31st, the revenues we have are, revenues we've collected from normal business operations and taxes and such, is $5,847,285. We had budgeted $5,704,507. So right now, through the end of May, we're $142,779 over budget on monies that we've collected. And each individual line item has pluses and minuses, so I'm not going to go over the individual items. Meanwhile, since we're at the end of 11 months, the expenses that we have incurred are $5,481,084. And we've budgeted $5,704,507. So we've budgeted so that we have a balanced budget. Right now, we still have budgeted money that hasn't been spent, of $223,422. So financially, we're in very good health, I think, with the reserves that we have, the monies and the income slightly above on the budget, and the expenses seem to be normal expenses. So that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Is there a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report subject to audit?
So move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And now I'd like to introduce Mr. Frank DeFroga of the Firm of Wissman and Giordano, who conducted our audit of our fiscal year 2023 to give the report.
Thank you very much, Mayor, appreciate it. Okay, so the audit report is broken out into several different sections. The first section being the opinion, which is the independent auditor's report. That tells everybody how the city audit went for the year. The second part of the report are the entity-wide financial statements. And these financial statements are prepared on the accrual basis of accounting. The next section is the fund-level financial statement. And this is, this is the financial statements that are being used each month by the, by the city. They report at the fund level. And as part of the audit process, we prepare accrual entries to get to the entity-wide level. Okay, and that's normal for all governments. The next section following the fund-level statements are the notes to the financial statements. The notes to the financial statements give the reader of the financial statements a little better understanding of what occurred during the year, what the various policies, and what types of generally accepted accounting principles the city follows. The next section is the general fund budget versus actual, which Jim touched on briefly. The next section after that are supplemental information relating to the pension plans, the two different pension plans that the city has. The actuary will put together various statistics, and they're part of the financial statements. And then after that, we have supplemental information, which takes each of the different funds that the city has and shows them separately, so that you can see the accounting, what was spent and what was received during the year in those funds. And then the next section is the independent auditor's report relating to internal controls and compliance issues, okay? And then finally, the last section are the recommendations for the city. So I'm going to start out with the audit report. Basically, the audit report states we've audited the financial statements of the government activities, each major fund of the city of Newcastle, as of and for the years ended June 30th, 2023 and 2022, and the related notes to the financial statements. "In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly, in all material respects, the financial position of the government activities, each major fund, and remaining information of the city of Newcastle as of June 30th, 2023 and 2022, and the respective changes in financial position for the years that ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." So what we have here is a clean report, an unmodified report. And this is the type of report that all government agencies would like to receive. Okay, so it's like getting an A+ on your report, okay? The next paragraph just talks about the basis for our opinion. It explains to the reader that we conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, as well as the standards applicable to government auditing standards. So we do the audit in accordance with government auditing standards because you receive a lot of, you receive federal grants, state grants, that require us to look at, make sure that you're following the rules and regulations surrounding those grants. The next section of the audit report talks about what's management's responsibility. Basically, city's management is responsible for the presentation and the preparation of the financial statements, okay, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. As well, they're also responsible to make sure they maintain internal control structure and that they have proper internal controls in place. The next section talks about the auditor's responsibility. It explains that our objectives are to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are fairly presented, okay? We can't, you know, we can test 100% of transactions, but it would cost a lot of money. So what we do is, we do sampling techniques. We look at some cash disbursements throughout the year. We look at receipts for the year. We look at your payroll, making sure that there's proper controls and that things check out in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. As part of the audit, we're required to do certain things. One of the things being exercise professional judgment and maintain professional skepticism throughout the audit. We're required to identify your key controls. We're required to make sure the accounting principles are generally accepted in the United States and that you follow proper procedures. And then we're required to communicate with management throughout the audit process. Also included in the opinion, I mentioned earlier, there's a budget versus actual statement. So we review that, making sure that is fairly stated in relationship to the rest of the financial statements. And then there are some additional information relating to the pension plan and the fund-level statements, so we make sure again those are reasonably and fairly stated as well. So again, this is a clean report. Just to kind of give you an overview, at the entity-wide level, which is the full accrual level, your total assets were about $47 million for the year. Your total liabilities were $4 million. So that left you net assets of $43 million, okay? If you look at your revenues for the year, again, at the accrual level, your total revenues for the year were $6.6 million. Your total expenses were $5.4 million. So you had an increase in your fund balance or in your reserves of about $1.2 million, okay? In the prior year, you had an increase of 1.7, okay? So down about $474,000 in the prior year. Some of the major differences, this year, the revenue was 1.2. In the prior year, it was 4.5. But in that 4.5, there was $2.8 million in the coronavirus funds that were received, which is like a one-time, you know, inflow of cash, okay? So when you back out to 2.8, it brought you down to 1.7. So to try to get apples and apples, there's 1.7 in 2022 compared to 1.2 in 2023. That's how I came up with those numbers. When you look at your fund-level statements, your revenues over expenses for the current year were about $200,000. In the prior year, if you take out the coronavirus funds of the 2.8, you were at $772,000. So a decrease of about $580,000 between those two years, okay? The next section are the, all the footnotes to the financial statements. And there really have been no significant changes to the footnote. So I'm not going to go through each one, but you can read them at your leisure. The next section after that, I just wanted to touch on, similar to what Jim just went over in the Treasurers' Report, is the budget versus actual statement for 2023. So in 2023, the city budgeted $4 million in revenues. The actual revenues for the general fund in 2023 were $4.8 million. So you had $842,000 excess of budgeted revenues. What basically accounted for that were transfer taxes, were up about $250,000. But that's, you know, transfer taxes are hard to anticipate from year to year because it depends on when people are selling their homes. So if you had, if the market is hot, people are selling their homes, that number could be pretty big. But it's hard to anticipate that. So you don't want to, you know, bank on, you know, bringing in 600,000, 700,000 every year on that because you don't really know. So you want to be conservative when you, when you budget for that. Other areas that increased were licenses and permits. Again, a lot of renovations and permits and things of that nature. So that was up about $282,000. And then interest and rents were up $143,000. So that basically accounted for the majority of your increases. As far as the expenditures go, we budgeted $5.2 million, and the actual were 5.4. So we had, we overspent by about $200,000. And basically, the major differences were, in the area of public safety, we overspent about 100. And in capital outlays, we overspent about $132,000, okay? But again, capital outlays is kind of hard. Sometimes you get additional grants, and then you end up spending more in the capital outlay area. So that's it for that. And then the supplemental information is next. And then in the back, we have a couple of recommendations that I reviewed with management, and they're in the process of addressing those recommendations, okay? Any questions of the council? Yes.
The recommendations that you made, were those, did they indicate there were significant deficits? Or were these sort of technical things to?
No, the biggest thing is the system that is being used. After a certain number of days, you can't go back and post journal entries back to the system. It's kind of a flaw in the, in the system of admins. So we had to make several adjusting journal entries to get our books and records equal to yours. So we're in the process of talking to management to figure a way that we can get those entries into the system now. That, again, it's past, I think they give you like 90 days to put up, to close. After that 90-day timeframe, you can't go back and put the entries in.
So this does not indicate a problem? It's a technical issue with the way the system?
Correct, correct.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Would that, tagging along to that question, would that potentially mean the city exploring a different system to use that would allow for more flexibility in journal entry?
Potentially.
Is that normal to have it open when auditors come to make those notes?
Yeah, potentially, you could look at it. There's other software out there that you might consider, you know, going to, that would let you, you know, book those entries.
I want to ask you about the variance in some of the revenue funds that you guys indicated, permits, you know, the property transfer tax, that, you know, it's hard to predict.
Right.
And I think you mentioned special revenue fund, like that they should be classified under special revenue fund versus a general revenue fund. And my understanding is also like, those flex, highly flexible revenue funds should be left out of base budget revenue, right? Is that correct? So that maybe there's a fluctuation of like pandemic that happened and?
Well, the, the budget is based on the general fund. So property tax is a part of the general fund, okay? So you try to budget the property taxes based on your history. You know, you can look at a 10-year history to try to figure out what your property taxes might be for that year. The special revenue funds are all the additional funds that the money's earmarked for certain things. Like for instance, this year, Denrak gave us a lot of money for grants, but we use that to, for capital outlet, okay? So you wouldn't make that part of your general fund budget because you didn't know about it at the time, okay? So the general, the budget is just based on the general fund. That's what you're budgeting basically.
I was asking about the, sorry, property transfer tax. So like, as people purchase properties, not the tax. Like, that fluctuates anywhere, it goes $200,000, $900, $600. So we budget on the lower side?
Right, you're conservative. That's what you want to be on the revenue.
Should that be counted as a separate revenue stream? Because it's unpredictable in that sense.
No, because it's part of the, the general fund budget. So you got to include it in that budget.
Just because of our job, predicting on a conservative side, I guess.
Right. You always try to be conservative, you know, with your revenues. You want to budget lower, you know, because, like Jim said, you have a balanced budget. If you budget too aggressive and you don't meet it, and you're trying to, and then you spend that money, you're going to run in a deficit position. So you want to really be careful when you're, when you're budgeting. You don't want to overestimate your revenues.
Yeah, makes sense. And then on page 35, my last question is about the pension. Second line says, "City's proportionate share of net pension liability." So some years are positive, some years are showing as negative, and the fluctuation is rather great, I guess? Do you want to talk about that?
Well, a lot of that's based on the actuary. The actuaries do calculations, so a lot goes into it, you know, how long people live, the market conditions. So, you know, one year it can be positive, next year it can be, it can be negative. It just fluctuates tremendously.
But this is going out of our pension fund? This isn't part of the general fund?
That's correct.
Okay.
And you're part of the statewide fund, so you have a piece of that statewide pension that you?
So what is the, the, in parentheses, negative? Does that mean the city paid that part on that line? And the positive ones that, that we received?
No, that's the, that's the asset, that, that's your share. So overall, what happens, you're part of the state's plan. And based on all the governments that are in the state plan, you get a percentage of that plan, of that pot. This is your, this is an asset. $112,000 was an asset relating to that pension plan. And that was your portion of the asset that, that goes on your books, okay? So it could be positive one year, or it could be a liability next year again, depending on various factors that take place, okay? What I would recommend is, I'm sure you meet with your actuaries, have them come in and give you, you know, a little overview of how the different things affect the, you know, liability asset, to give you a better understanding.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Anyone else?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for your time, sir.
Sure.
Do you work with other government agencies or city municipalities?
Well, we're, do we do audits of others? Yes.
So the city historically, over the past couple of years at least, has had a practice of carrying forward excess funds from one fiscal year to the next, almost using that to help fund the next budget, right? Is that something that you've seen in other entities? And/or if you have any thoughts about that, one or the other?
So again, it depends on, you know, how you budget. What most governments do, they try, like Jim said, they try to have a balanced budget, okay? But some years, it's hard to balance the budget. So your expenses, you might want to maybe do a lot more construction projects or something. So your expenses might be greater than what you anticipate being, bringing in as revenue. So the only way you can balance the budget is by using some of the surplus from the prior year for this year. And that's what makes you kind of balance the budget. So for instance, say your budget, say your revenues were 5 million, but your expenses were 6 million, you're going to be short a million dollars. But if you have reserves, like Jim was mentioning, he has reserves of $8 million, you can use a million of that to help balance the budget for next year. And in the budget, you put, you know, carry, carry forward funds from prior year, a million dollars. So a lot of governments do use their reserves when they need to, okay? You don't want to spend all your reserves because then, you know, the one year when you have, expenses are greater than revenues, then you can't pay your bills. So you got to be careful how you're, you're budgeting, and you don't want to spend, you know, you want to save those, those reserves for a rainy day if you need them. Basically, it's like your home budget, you know, you always want to have a little reserve in the tank just in case.
Sorry to interrupt, but if I could clarify on this, it sounds like this, having this rollover is a function of our being conservative and estimating revenue. So we're conservative, for example, in projecting future property taxes, property transfer tax. And then if a lot of properties are sold, or one big property is sold and that comes up, then we have revenue in excess of budgeted expenses, and that leads to a rollover, right? So it seems like the fact that we budget conservatively naturally leads to this?
Yeah, it can, it can lead to a rollover, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
But like each month, it's important, you know, Jim goes over the monthly financial statements, and that's what you want to monitor on a month-to-month basis to see, you know, what percent of the budget has been spent, you know, as you're moving along. You know, six months in, you would expect maybe half, 50% of the budget being spent. If you see 70%, then you've got to, you know, you need to ask questions. Why are we at 70%? We should be closer to 50%. So you understand, you know, what's happening. You know, there could be some expense that popped up that you didn't anticipate. Or maybe a revenue that, you know, you didn't receive because something happened. So, you know, by going over the monthly statements, that should give the council an understanding of what's going on throughout the year.
I understand. Thank you for your independent third-party question.
So you have any further questions?
Can I add to that question? Just, I take it short, what Mr. Mather was saying. What do you see in other municipalities or state agencies on a best practice? Is it six months, is it 12 months of, you know, those reserves to have a part of your budget?
It's, that's always, that's, that's a common question. Usually like 90 days maybe to six months, you know? It's hard to say. Each, each place is, is a little different on how much they try to, you know, keep as a, as a reserve.
Would that also depend on how many revenue sources a place has perhaps, and the dynamics of that?
Yeah, that could be like state grants, and, you know, there's a lot of federal grants out there that could have impact. There's a lot of different things that can go into it.
Any questions about Mr. Decker?
I just have one question. We're coming into you now, and this is due to you from last year.
Right.
Is there a reason of the delay?
Well, the biggest thing was a couple of things. There were some new funds this year that were added to the accounting system, which required additional work on our part, as well as the posting of the journal entries related, a lot of balancing to get everything in balance. So it took a little longer to get to the point that we are today in your show report.
So the next round will be a little bit quicker?
That's what we're hoping. So then, like, this past year, we started a little later. I think we started in like towards the end of November. You know, we can push that up till October so that we can finish by December and get you a report earlier.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Decker, any questions?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. Although perhaps while Mr. DeFroga is still with us, we should move, jump ahead a bit on the agenda to the resolution to approve this audit report, and then that will complete this issue. So that's item one of your new business in your binder. I think it's right behind the report. Right in front. Right in front, sorry. So I'll read it, Resolution 2024-21, a resolution to approve the fiscal year 24 financial audit. Whereas the Firm of Wissman and Giordano and Associates completed the, it says FY24 financial audit. I think that should be corrected to FY23. Is that correct?
Yes.
So this was, so the fiscal year 23 financial audit. And their representative has reviewed the draft audit with City Council at a public meeting held on Tuesday, June 11th, 2024. Now therefore, via hereby resolved, that the City Council approves the fiscal year, and again corrected to 2023 financial audit.
I would change draft to final. The final report is as draft.
Okay, it says hereby approves the fiscal year 2023 financial audit.
Okay, it doesn't say draft?
It doesn't say draft. Sorry. Okay, so is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion's approved. Thank you, Mr. Decker.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, I'm sorry, back up to reports. So we now have the report from the City Administrator.
Thank you. Yes, as we have discussed, we've been having meetings this past month and past few weeks. We encourage residents to attend those meetings to stay informed. Our new enforcement officer will begin with the city in just a couple of weeks.
Could you speak up, please?
Sure, sorry. We are continuing to meet with Del Dot to continue discussions on a possible traffic improvement district, or TID, as we previously refer to it as. I have continued over this past month to meet with a lot of stakeholders in our community, past council members and members who love the community, who are very involved. So I've appreciated everyone's time. The floating dock project that has been ongoing was previously on hold due to the Army Corps permit that restricted any pilot drilling from March of June, June 30th, due to migrations in that area. So following June 30th, this work will continue, and the projects will begin with the design package, the pilot drive testing, and then continuing, continuation of the project. Just another reminder that the county and Tyler Technologies continue to do the reassessment program, and letters will be sent out to residents. So if you have any questions, definitely reject to the county regarding that. Thank you to all who attended Separation Day. It was a wonderful event. It was very nice to meet everyone. I have also met during this past month with members of the Flood Resiliency Committee to discuss the flood project through the National Resources Conservation Service and work out the funding and then an understanding of the funding that will definitely be given to us. And we've contacted Senator Harper and Coons to get more details on that. We, I've also, during this past month, continued to look into items such as different vendors and possible emergency management and emergency alert system for the state. And that concludes my report for today.
Thank you. Any questions? Council on that report? I just go with just a?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, Chief McCain.
Good evening. I'm going to start with the report that I gave you. I know it's a little late, so I just want to highlight a few things in case there are any questions. There's a few call types in there that may look a little disturbing, and I wanted to give you some background on that. The carjacking was actually another agency that we assisted, or our task force officer was called out to address that. So, that wasn't a local incident. The same with the burglary in progress, that was us assisting another agency. You'll see kidnapping in there, that was a local incident, that was downgraded to a domestic-related assault, where we're having a hard time getting the victim to cooperate. So, when you see those three call types, that's the background there. As I reported last month, we had a shooting in the William Penn Square area. I told you then that I thought we were close. I wished, I wish I could have said then what I wanted to say, but we, we did have a suspect then, and since then, we've made an arrest. So, it was a, well done by our detectives, and also with the help of the FBI, Von the Crime Task Force. This past month, we were short a few officers due to injury. We still have one in the academy. So, I just wanted to point that out, there's, you'll probably see a little bit more over time than typically you've seen. I wanted to talk briefly about the street sweeping project that was started. I know I left early last month, and I guess there was a discussion. So, it's my understanding that council said you, you've agreed to about a sixty-day grace period, so we're thirty days into that. We technically haven't really completed an assessment of sign placement, we're doing that now. To this point, we feel pretty comfortable, so, but we do have a letter drafted. I'm going to post that on our, on our Facebook page so that folks can see it. But in a nutshell, the letter basically says that this, this is a comprehensive sweep, a street sweeping program that's, it started back in two thousand and nineteen, was put on hold for a little while. So, I think most folks saw that. But it, it, it basically describes the fact that the streets have been outlined or identified for, for timeframes when the cars are going to be moved, and that if you're in that spot during a timeframe, you're, you're technically in violation of a state title, state titled twenty-one code. The letter will, will outline what that code is. I can tell you that, that the fine is around fifty-three dollars, and I think I said this before, I'm not a hundred percent comfortable putting that in a warning letter, only because that, that fine may change, you know, who knows? But, and it, it's a typical parking assessment.
Not to interrupt, but would it be just higher, not lower?
If it were to, if it were to change?
Yes.
It would probably be higher.
Could, could we do something, some language of minimum of fifty-three, so, so that just people can anticipate something?
We could do that, sure.
Would that be?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. And we can, and we'll also put that on our Facebook page and the website, and the statutes identified as well.
Question came up last, last month about handicap parking. Are they required to move during this?
Yes, they're, they're not exempt from this. So, that was, that was my next point. So, that's that in a nutshell. These, these letters will be put on, on the cars that are, that are parked where the signs prohibit, and they'll give the, we're also going to try to put a schedule with that letter. In the past, we had envelopes that were weatherproof. Unfortunately, the only envelopes we have say citation, and I don't think that's a good idea to, to put citation with a warning in it, so it'll just be the letter itself. And then eventually, our generated warnings that, that we typically give through the e-ticket system may be used as well. So, we're, we're not really in any rush to, to, you know, to get people tickets, but we do want, we, obviously, we want to get compliance as soon as possible. So, and based on, on council's discussion last month, we have another month of some outreach that we can do to hopefully get folks to comply. I did want to talk briefly about another program that we've, we're going to start up again. We, we, and those of you that, that remember this from about a year ago, we worked with the county paramedics to create a, a program, it's called Lender Hands, Save a Life. I know Council President Day, the mayor, participated in this. This is a, a program that basically started after we've identified a lack of, of intervention for CPR. So, I think the, the number was somewhere around seventy-five percent of all the heart attacks go without any community intervention. And typically, the reasoning behind that is the fear of CPR. So, this is not a class that gets you certified in CPR, but it's a class that gets you comfortable with just chest compressions, and, and identifies the significance of early intervention. We want to get that number way better than seventy-five percent for sure. So, on our, I have some, I have some, some brochures that I'm going to leave here, if you have somewhere you want to post it that outlines the date. It's, there are two classes on June twenty-seventh, one from two to four, and then another one from six to eight. I wouldn't expect to be in there for the full two hours. Again, this is just to get folks comfortable with, with the concept of CPR. And then again, it, we'll post this on our, our Facebook page, and if you have any questions, please give us a call.
Chief, can I ask a question there? Do you know what are the main reasons why people are uncomfortable, you know, with compressions or, you know, just CPR in general?
Sure.
So, what can we do as a council and city, you know, to, to inform and encourage?
Well, this is a start, getting, getting folks to come to this event and, and to recognize that it's not, it's not as complicated as you may think. Some of the feedback that we've gotten in the past is of the fear that they do it wrong, they may get in trouble, and that's just, that's, that's not accurate. And then a lot of it is just a lack of understanding, that nobody knows what to do. And it is very indicative of, of what we deal with really in, in any first responder profession. Folks aren't comfortable with, with seeing people in distress, and it takes a special breath to, to want to intervene, so, but, you know, and I think those, those will, those get identified in this class, as a matter of fact. I think we talked about some of the things that prevent people from, from engaging. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I just had a question about overdose Narcan case. Can you just briefly talk about that? There's just one case there, so.
There's, there's one overdose, it was an accidental overdose, no Narcan was, was administered.
Accidental, like pills?
Pills, accidental. It was a prescribed medication that was inadvertently overused.
Okay, council communications, start with Mr. Zabaka.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. I'm going to start with the street schedules, since we're just talking about it. I, I think I briefly mentioned to city administrator an idea to explore fridge magnets. I don't know if you had the chance to look at it, that they would have a schedule of the street sweeping. Yeah, if you don't mind just saying that, so, so that we can do more through outreach with the schedule color quoted or something by great street. As the city administrator said, we, we have met with Del Dot representative there for planning and director, a person overseeing the, you know, transportation improvement district plans, and on top of TID, we have talked about some path forward, and, you know, in the room, we had a city planning commission chair as well, and, you know, other things that's coming up for the city's comprehensive plan update next year. So, we were kind of trying to inquire as well, on top of this citywide initiative, to try and understand how we can improve traffic, how we can improve, you know, walkability for folks, is the, how we can also inform the changes potentially that we may have to make to the plan in upcoming year, and what, what is that? So, I think the, the next step is going to be identifying available zoning right now in spaces in the city for, for, for Chris Rogers, for, to, to kind of give us the developer book, if you guys remember when developers were coming to the meetings, talking about potential traffic, highest counts of traffic. So, that's going to be the kind of study we're going to do, exercise for the whole city of available lots, so that we can kind of see what does it then max count current with current zoning is kind of approved currently, and whether we need to rethink that. And then I think one thing that we talked about is just an infant stage is exploring more walkability grants with the state, and one of the suggestions was to, to look at even the crossing, whether, very cut off to make a diagonal crossing for, for folks to not have to cross, you know, and make a little puzzle out of it. And the last thing I'll say there, that was really good news to find out from the director of planning, is that the Route nine, South Route nine, is made to the comprehensive, what's it, Transportation Capital Improvement Fund. So, basically, the, the five-year plan that they, that they announced, so, so that is one of the projects listed there for FY twenty-five through FY twenty-seven, so three years is going to be used right now to conduct an engineering study, to figure out what to do with it. But it's a good, I, I know, I know it's not immediate fix, but they need to figure out what, what to do next, so it's better than not being on that list at all. So, hopefully after that study, we can, we have a front seat to, to have that, you know, addressed permanently. I, I don't have much comments on, one of the residents last meeting brought up the EPA comments about some of the lots on Seventh Street. My only comment is that I have reached out to city administrator who, who is preparing a, a letter response with, with an engineer from the city. So, I'm, I'm, you know, there's something that we're going to be looking to share to see, what, what is the response there, but that's just something I wanted to, to mention, because it's very important for us to make sure that we have, you know, made sure that all the treatment that needed to be done for these sites has, has taken place before we decide to do anything to those, those places. I really want to thank everybody who came for Separation Day. I, I, I love the event, I have two little kids, one daughter is almost thirty-three, son almost thirty-one, and we just love, my own daughter loved the ride. She, she wanted to go and there and go around. Kind of ironically, we talked about it at that time, a couple nights before, she didn't even remember, we were reading a book, and she said, "I really want to go on one." And I'm like, "You have been on one last year," but, but you were crying, because you were scared. So, she enjoyed it, she was like, "I can't wait to go for my birthday." But then Separation Day provided that for. So, thank you, guys. I want to thank police, fire, for, you know, just tremendous job securing that, you know, everything goes smooth. Event Allies for, you know, putting all the logistical pieces together, as well as city staff, and, and volunteers, and special thanks to Public Works for putting all the, you know, preparations and cleaning up afterwards. It almost looked like nothing happened, but there was, there was indeed a lot happening all day. And thanks to all the visitors who came in town to, and residents for, and, you know, opening your, your town to, to visitors. And last, I want to just thank everybody for being patient with us as we go through budget season. We are meeting a lot almost every week in, in June now, and we have been meeting several times in May as well, virtually a lot of special meetings, and on top of that, having the FOP negotiations. So, residents, thank you for your patience. We're all learning about revenue streams, we're all learning about expenditures, trends, and all that stuff, so, and kind of strategy, long-term strategy to address all those, all those things. So, just, just bear with, with us, as we, we are, thanks to council actually, for all the work that they've put in, you know, identifying all the possible, creating ways to, you know, to make things work. So, we are trying to be responsible at, you know, and, and make, make sense out of it. I'll, I know the council president's going to talk more about it, so that, that's all for me right now.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Madaway?
Thank you, Council President. This past Sunday, Italian residents, friends, St. Peter's Catholic Church, St. Anthony's Society, Shawtown Community, celebrated a hundred years of a parade, a community event on Sunday. While I was aware of the parade, which I watched with my boys and family, I was not aware of the centennial or the opportunity to participate. To the organizers, residents, and participants, I would like to apologize, and I want you to know that I'll do better. Your history in this town is one that is filled with faith, strength, and power. At many times, you were discriminated against, mistreated, and allowed to only live in certain areas of this community. Your history is our history. To my colleagues on council and to the mayor, I'd like to respectfully ask for a proclamation that will recognize the hundred-year celebration and the contributions to this city that were being made and are being made by Italian immigrants and their descendants here in the city of Newcastle.
Just report on that for a future month.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. And then respectfully, I request that this celebration be added to the city calendar, to the city website, et cetera. Thank you, Council President.
Very good. Is that all for?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zell.
Thanks for everyone who came out for Separation Day. It was an amazing event. I had an opportunity walking around, talking to people, hitting the vendors, talking to some other entertainment, just asking how things went, and got lots of positive feedback. So, I thank you as our community, if you have positive, negative feedback of Separation Day, please get that information to us so that we can make the event better for next year, so we can always improve things. Another thing I'm working on is signs. We have legislation out there when we can put signs up, when we can take signs down, working with Legal Right Now to update the information out there for when we can do that. So, I just wanted to give you a heads up, that is upcoming in the near future. As for the dog park, we do have a request proposal that needs to be finalized. Anthony, do you know when we're going to be able to get that published out there?
Yes, hopefully in the next week or so.
So, within next week or so, we should have the RFP put out there that we can send out to anyone that would like to submit a request proposal for the design of a dog park. That is it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Day?
Just a couple of things. So, I'd like to publicly congratulate Regina Marine on her election to the trust. I would also like to thank Brian Madaway for organizing the blood drive. I did attend and give blood, I thought it was a great event. So, thank you for that. I attended the Separation Day kickoff, the parade, I was on the, on the battery that Saturday, and watched the fireworks. I thought overall, it was a fine event. It was very enjoyable, it seemed like everybody enjoyed their, the Friday night out on the wharf. So, thank you for, for police, fire, Public Works, everybody that contributed to that, including event allies. The AV equipment, the electrical upgrades will be done in here on June nineteenth, and the following week, from the twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth, Versaline will be in here to install the equipment. I did finally get all the van shell information I need from, from the various sources, so I'm expecting that we can complete that in the next couple of weeks. I know the mayor's not here, but National Night Out this year will be August sixth from sixty-eight, eight P.M. We'll be working with the fire company and the police department, trying to get some sponsors, so you'll see more information on that. The chief had talked about the hands-only CPR. I did attend the hands-only CPR at the last, the last time they offered me. It was really well-attended, the instructors are really great, they're fun. My wife went, she didn't realize actually how hard it is actually to do the compressions. So, if you're not used to it, you know what I mean, some people, it, it's good practice, is all I'm saying, and I really think this is a steady initiative to improve our, our, our survival rate for, for people that do suffer a heart attack. So, please, go out, sign up to, to attend, it, it's a great event. The last thing I wanted to touch on is, I know at the beginning of this year, we talked about having a presentation on approved but unbuilt projects. I know the University of Delaware is doing some work, but I still think we should have a, a presentation here, council, which projects are approved and unbuilt, if there's an expiration, if there's, you know, just to clear up some issues, there's still questions about some of the projects on Seventh Street, the St. Peter's Triangle, and even an update on approved projects that, like the status, like I'm, I'm interested in where we're at with the, with the Lukens Drive project. I did see that we issued eleven single, eleven dwelling permits this past month, which is, I think, a lot for our small town, but it's, I, I think it's a positive for us, but I do, would like to know about the other approved unbuilt projects. Thank you, Ms. Madaway President.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we don't have, the mayor's not with us tonight, as she's not feeling well, so she, she was going to make her report, and she was also going to invite, as part of her report, Mr. Reeves and or Ms. Price to give us a brief update on the outreach coordination. So, I'll invite one or both of you.
Good evening. I'll go ahead and get started since our time is short, while John, John is going to pass out the, a packet of information that contains more details from what we're going to actually talk about. One of the initiatives that we continued with this past week, can you hear me? Is the tall ships initiative, to bring more tall ships into the city of Newcastle. to give us a brief update on the outreach coordination. So I'll invite one or both of you.
Good evening. I'll go ahead and get started since our time is short while John is going to pass out the packet of information that contains more details from what we're going to actually talk about. One of the initiatives that we continued with this past week, can't hear me, is the tall ships initiative to bring more tall ships into the city of Newcastle. So we are now members of, through the National Tall Ships Foundation, we are designated as a hospitality port. And that simply puts our name out there as a welcoming place that will welcome a certain size of tall ships. We're not equipped to handle, you know, the gigantic ones, but schooners. And so we actually got a response back pretty quickly from a Spanish ship. It is called the Now Trinidad. That is a replica of Magellan's flagship that circumnavigated the globe. So we're talking, I think it's next week with the captain of that ship. And we're going to iron out, you know, some educational events for kids, some adult lectures, deck tours, sales and so forth. So that's exciting. The last, we mentioned the bicycle-friendly application that we have pending. We have, I think, three weeks left and that will be completed by its due date on June twenty-fifth. And Councilman Nerman mentioned, I'm sorry, Zubaka mentioned the traffic situation, which is, you know, an ongoing issue in Newcastle. And one of the benefits that we'll have if we are in fact designated as a bicycle-friendly community is that we will be able to apply for additional grants that will make us a more bikeable, a more walkable. And hopefully, you know, over time, when people begin to understand they can walk more here, they can bicycle more here, hopefully the traffic will in turn be reduced by that effort. So that's ongoing. The other thing I wanted to talk about is we've been talking to and brainstorming, of course, with different local businesses, organizations about different ways to welcome visitors so they come into town and they walk onto Delaware Street and now what do I do? So obviously, print materials, brochures, those kinds of things are helpful. We've also talked about having some possible digital displays in town in a couple places, maybe on Delaware Street where people can come. And, you know, it's like a scrolling thing that says, "Here are the restaurants. Today's Saturday, June eighth. Here are the activities going on" and that sort of thing. That would make it easy for people to know, you know, this is where you go when you arrive in town. And then we've also, we have a rack card. Our first iteration of the rack card has been supplied throughout the town. We've gone through a couple of edits. The latest addition is at the printer. And after we get that back, then we're going to start distributing those to some of the surrounding hotels in Wilmington, up on Route nine, and also at the I ninety-five corridor, the rest stop there that gets a lot of visitors. So that's going to be one of our goals in the coming weeks. I'll turn it over to John.
Another major effort this last month was to really ramp up the social media platform for the town. So we had started some Facebook and Instagram accounts as well as the website. And so we put a lot of pressure on that. We put a lot of focus on that. So what we want to do is target the daily cadence, almost daily cadence of posting. And we've sort of, we're sort of up to that level now, which means every day we're posting something as well as putting a full-court press on big events, the day of New Castle and Separation Day. So although we, you know, we started from scratch, so the followers are growing slowly. But we did get a post-reach of, which means views and exposure in the last twenty-eight days of twenty-five thousand. And post-engagement, which is likes and comments and shares of over four thousand. So in addition, we're working on developing relationships with other, with other sort of channels and platforms. We have, thanks to initiative of Mayor Leary, we've connected with the Visit Historic Newcastle account, which was set up a number of years ago, twenty nineteen, and has been sort of maintained by Linda Resford and Susky. So now we are co-administrators on that site, so we can post on that as well. And that has a, already has a following of about two point four thousand. And for example, we posted a separation, one of our Separation Day posts on that platform, got a reach of about five thousand and likes or engagement of about one thousand, just for that one post. So we're ramping that up. We also have developed a relationship with a Facebook, a Facebook group called Delaware Events. They have about over twenty-nine thousand followers and through affiliated groups, about five hundred thousand kind of connections. So we are co-administrators on that as well, so we can post on that group. And we're developing quite a bit of sort of cooperative, you know, cooperative posting. It's funny, the social media thing is not so much hierarchical, it's all collaborative basically. So you do collaborations with other people who have other groups and other followings. So we're doing more collaborations with other groups, including Delaware Events, including, for example, a food blogger named, called Naomi Eats and so forth, who has a following of several thousand. And she's already written on, she did a combination jest ups in Separation Day, you know, video and so forth. So we're sort of looking for more relationships to get more reach, basically, and active on that. Following up on some of the, some of the council suggestions, we are working on a prototype of a volunteer kind of portal, you know, based on Councilman Zelt's suggestion. We are working, based on Councilman Zubak's suggestion, we are reaching out, working with some of the data or some of the state agencies that are collecting data, both economic and demographic data. We included, we included in your package a little bit of analysis, knowing that we're talking about budget and so forth. Just to think of the tourism as not necessarily as, as critical as police, but still important. If you look at the state-level tourism GDP contribution in twenty-twenty-two was four point five billion dollars. And if you look at, if you think we're five thousand seven hundred people in Historic Newcastle, it seems like a small percentage, but as a percentage of population, if you do that math, our contribution to GDP, even if we were a normal town, would be twenty-five billion, twenty-five million dollars, basically. So that's, and of course Newcastle is not the normal town. So presumably, our contribution to the tourist economy is several multiples of that. So it's an important issue is whether, you know, we're sort of pulling our weight in terms of pulling tourism into the state and also potentially getting the benefits of that segment of the economy for our town. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I just want to thank you for looking into that. That was the hope, you know, I could be able to lean on some of the data and what does it mean for our city, you know. So hopefully we can get some access through the tourism office and their best work in this. I wanted to ask a question about Facebook posts. Are you using the, are you promoting posts as well or are you paying for the posts to be, you know, put into a certain region, like for these events?
We've done some of that, you know, and we want to do more of that. We're experimenting with being very focused about that in terms of kind of overlapping geographic areas and also kind of demographic, kind of picking by demographic.
All right. I did that too when I was.
It's pretty sophisticated, the way you can select your geography. And the influencer that we worked with showed us, you know, don't ever just focus on new work. Say, you know, you've got to choose the overlapping and you can, you can really tweak exactly, you know, who you're.
Well, it can be really helpful depending on different events, you know, like for different audiences, you know. It could be really helpful tool, I think. And the last thing I wanted to just ask was, is there a space that you think, or can you start thinking about potentially engaging some youth from the town to help, you know, help with a brand name, not in the sense of that it needs any help, but just to engage them in town so they can draw on some of the youth from the town. Or even somebody who's influencer in a way, or just likes to post on social media, that lives in town, that will potentially be able to call or some of the things from town to town for the town to provide in a generational kind of content.
That's a good, that's a good point, yeah.
Give them experience, you know, even reach out Colonial, asking which kids, you know, live around here that could have, that are maybe even part of social media pop or something that could potentially. There's Ken Phillips, maybe we have good resource from Colonial. He's their, I don't know his title, but media coordinator, but perhaps he would know. Perhaps he's leading a club like that, that could identify some, that would be interested in some, you know, experience, you know. Just curious.
That's a great idea.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, I just have one quick comment of, you know, I'm involved with the Kappa R. Nickel Foundation. And obviously, with the tall ships in town, the bathing facilities for the crew are ship top.
Yes.
And also the bathroom facilities aren't the best.
Right.
So if you want to continue to try to attract these tall ships, you've got to have shower facilities and bathroom facilities.
We've gotten an education about that and learned that each ship's requirements are different. And some are self-contained. But we've also reached out to, for example, the Terry House. And we'll reach out also to, the place behind Dennis is, there's an Airbnb, can't think, but anyway.
We have a bunch of potential solutions.
Yeah, we have possibilities and people that have said yes, you know, for the crew, for the captain.
Your organization's coordinating with other organizations to pull this off.
Yes.
It's a city and a trustee problem around the town.
But for sure, there needs to, in the future, something more permanent to address that, yeah.
Yeah, and eventually we want to set up a sort of a committee of its own to work with that because we'd love to have more tall ships come, you know, every weekend more frequently, basically. Because one of the things we feel like is that the Separation Day is great, the day of Newcastle is great. We really want to have more happen every weekend, basically, because the restaurants and the, you know, whatever, they get booked up and people get mad at them one weekend because they're full. But then the next weekend, there's nobody, basically. So we want to see if we can't space out the types of events and the types of attraction.
But yeah, good point.
I'm sorry, I have a quick question. So thank you for your presentation. You all have done a tremendous job. In respect to the Spanish ship, I know you're having a long conversation. Does it seem like that could be a twenty-twenty-four event?
Yeah, September, potentially. They're available the weekend before Art on the Grain, the twenty-first or something like that.
And in respect to rebranding or kind of casting a barnet, are we doing anything to kind of like let people in town know about these Facebook pages or these websites, et cetera?
Well, yeah, we, I mean, we repost, there's a bunch of, a couple of levels to that. One is sort of both the organizations in town who have an active Facebook presence or online presence and then the individuals are also active, right? So we, we have a good relationship with Newcastle Topics, you know, Matt Alexander, who's really a great resource. And we repost his, he reposts ours, basically same with Pork House and Historical Society and Partnership and so forth. So our idea is to kind of always cross-post and collaborate with those. The same thing happens with individuals too, because there's some individuals very active and we see them pop up again and again in who we've liked. And we like theirs if we think it's an appropriate topic as well.
And if those individuals or groups are part of other groups, then it filters down like network marketing. Well, you know.
Right, yeah. And then there are also regional groups, you know, that, Facebook groups and whatever, that we join. And then we're able to post in them or have to share to them. So that's why, one reason why we're getting this sort of twenty-five thousand person reach. It's not our followers much as the followers that we connect with through all those groups and all those collaborations. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Madaway?
Well, first of all, I have to say I was sorry to this Separation Day and the blood drive, but I was out of town. It sounds like they both went well and I was glad to hear that. We had wonderful weather for Separation Day. But I have a few other things I need to talk to you about. We received our report for the fiscal twenty-three audit from Mr. DeFroda from the accounting firm of Wisman and Giordano. I want residents to know that our treasurer, Mr. Jim Wisman, has no current connection with this firm. Seeing the same name, I'm sure people have raised that question, don't mind. I discussed this with Mr. Wisman prior to his appointment as our treasurer. Mr. Wisman did found this firm many years ago, but he sold it over twenty years ago to Mr. Giordano. And so the terms of the sale included the right to retain the name, even though Mr. Wisman has not been associated with the firm since it was sold. So he's more than twenty years out to be having any connection with that firm. And now the longer part. Some of you probably heard, and you've heard tonight, council's facing some very difficult decisions regarding our budget for the fiscal year which begins July first. Many costs are increasing and most of them are for nondiscretionary items. For example, the cost of our employees' health insurance is increasing twenty-seven percent. That's nothing the city has any control over. We do have a very healthy amount in reserve. And some have suggested that we simply use these funds to cover the deficit. That may work in the short term, but since the increased costs are for necessary ongoing items like insurance, it's not sustainable over the long term. Some like to compare government budgets to household budgets. If your basic household costs like rent or mortgage, utilities, food are increasing faster than your income, you may draw down savings to pay these bills, but you can't continue to do that indefinitely. So because of these increased costs, council does have to consider the possibility of a tax increase. We've reduced expenses where we could, but we also need to provide for the services residents of Newcastle deserve and expect. To do this, we need to attract and retain qualified staff for our administration, police and public works. We do have sufficient reserves to cover the deficit for one year. But as I said, we can't continue to live on our savings. As we also know, Newcastle County is currently conducting a reassessment of our properties. We will probably know the outcome of this reassessment by early next year. This will allow us to determine the impact of the reassessment on our future tax revenues since our property tax is based on the Newcastle County assessed value of our properties and make more informed decisions about changing our tax rate. So at this point, no final decision's been made, but council's considering waiting until we have this information to decide about increasing our tax rate. The decision will probably be made in Janu-, if we follow that, the decision would probably be made in January or February with any resulting increase taking effect in July of twenty-twenty-five. We don't take this decision lightly nor easily because we know the impact it will have on residents. But as always, this decision will be made in public meetings with the opportunity for residents to have input. So I just want to try to put this in perspective. Also, I want to point out something there were, this handout was on the table in the back, which just gives the basic numbers about our budget. I do need to point out that in the, on the right-hand side, the fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget, the proposed expense amount is a minimum. It may increase. There are still some outstanding issues under discussion and that have to be resolved. So the revenue over expense at this point is projected at just under five hundred thousand dollars, but that's a minimum. So we're not finished with the budget process. Just wanted to lay it out there with where we are right now. Okay. Captain Moore for the Fire Department?
Good evening, everybody. Any questions for the May Fire EMS report that we had, that you may have in your packets? We had a busy EMS month with a hundred and ninety-four calls. That's probably been our highest so far this year. If no questions, I just wanted to add that a few months ago, Chief Mayeski had commented on the retirement of one of our senior firefighter EMTs. Since then, we have hired firefighter EMT, Robert Nicholson. He comes from us, from, I used to work in the city of Wilmington and then went over to Cranston Heights and worked there. He was, worked for us part-time for a couple of years and we hired him on. So we welcomed him to our staff, so I'm sure you'll be seeing a lot of him around with training and events and that kind of stuff. So other than that, I don't have. So other than that, I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for council, Captain Moore? Okay, thank you. Okay, poppin' comments. The usual rules apply, please state your name, go to, you know, go to the podium, sign in, state your name, and where you live, you have three minutes. And Mr. Zellie has a timer, which I think you'll be able to see from the podium.
My name is Joanne Pachak. I reside at 28 East 4th Street. Have been there for many, many years, 57 to anybody's counting. The last five years, we have been inundated with flooding in our gardens, the backyards. Talking to other residents, I realize now that it's more widespread. I have talked to council, talked to the city about this, and we need to identify the source of it. It is so widespread that the neighbor next door is almost totally inundated with this flooding. And now it's causing structural damage to my property, which I really don't want to happen. I've been there and have improved that property forever. So I think that we need to identify, certain people have, in this room have been out to look at it, and they say it's a Denrec problem. That may be so, but there's never any follow-up. Now, I can document this back for five years. I know there's other neighbors here that can also document it. We can show you, we can talk to a blue in the face, but unless somebody identifies the reason for it, it is never going to be resolved. We can put and do different things, but what's going to prevent it from getting wider? Now, it's increasing up in my yard, it will never reach the house unless it's four feet tall, because the property goes down so far. And it's ending up now over in St. Peter Cemetery. And it is sometimes knee-deep, not ankle-deep, knee-deep, and that is a lot. We have had people come out and do follow-up, and they say, oh, good, it resolved itself. Well, it resolved itself only until the next rain. Now, what I've documented is during the daytime only. I'm not going to go out there at night and see how deep the water is. It just would be counterproductive and just not the wise thing to do. I know that there are other residents from my street here, from my block, and I would welcome them to have comments if they have any. But we need to get follow-up on this, and I need it done soon. And conscious, if I ever sell the property, I could not, in good conscience, not divulge this proper problem. I thank you all, and congratulations on a very, very great separation day.
What's your address, man?
I'm sorry?
What's your address?
28 East 4th Street.
East 4th Street? You're up by the dyke?
I'm sorry?
You're up by the dyke.
By the cemetery, thank you.
Can I just real quickly show you?
And how long has this been going on?
I've documented it for five years. I have dates.
Okay, keep building. We're just gonna have somewhere to go. I've come here tonight to ask council if anyone's considered what I brought to council last month. I brought a very serious issue to council last month concerning a super fund site in Davinville, just before Davinville. Your newspaper once again turned it into a joke, like she's been doing in this town for nearly a decade now with misleading the people with her bullshit newspaper. Now, I'm asking council, I got a feedback from Mrs. Zabaka that shows great concern for the residents of Newcastle. I know that when the comprehensive plan was put in, people did things around here that they should not have done. And this issue with EPA is not getting swept under the carpet. It is very important that the EPA be brought in here, not Denrec, not Fish and Wildlife, not the state of Delaware. The EPA handles all super fund sites. They're probably going to want to know who approved it in the first place. Now, I'm asking council to take this serious, and I mean it, because you're not going to have Denrec telling you everything's okay, and the building inspector and whoever else has set the rules. Because the way the comprehensive plan was set, to where our officials didn't need no input, put the people in this town in danger with flooding, with everything else. You look at the Midori site, we have to fix this. We cannot follow through with a steady group of peoples what they did to us, and then all of them went underground. I'm asking council to bring the proper authorities in here and have these sites evaluated by EPA. It is not right for you to sit there and act like you don't have to do it. That is a serious issue. You're talking about contaminations being disturbed. Now, I'm asking you to bring the EPA in, especially you, Mrs. New Administrator. And I'm gonna say something to you tonight that council might not like. It would be in your best interest to have no contact with Bill Barthel. Thank you all very much. You better ask council why, or else make appointment and I'll come in and sit down and talk to you. You're putting the people in danger in this town by following through with all these buildings. You're going to get flooded out, number one. You have nowhere a foot of water to go now. Quit following what was set up for you and be yourself and do what's right for the people in this town. Thank yous.
Well, I believe that Mrs. Zabaka and Mr. Tantillo said earlier, they have initiated contracts.
Not Denrec, EPA. And usually ones out of Pennsylvania, they don't know nobody around here. Thank you. You think it's funny, Mr. Zabaka, this isn't funny. There's a lot of things happening in this town that people should be arrested for. And you know it. You settled on the plan, it's maybe you were chair when they did it. You know what I'm talking about. Your newspaper is part of the local secret society, because she hides everything in this town from the people. And she can send her lawyer to me, because I'm more than willing to talk to you. You can all send your lawyer.
All right, Mr. President.
Yeah, yeah, tell the people the truth. Just like your high C level, all sudden it's playing B, that's Chinese level to crack the shit. All you got to do is paint for the referee and fix it.
Mr. Referee?
You be audience, but you people have no idea what's going on, what happened in this town. And if you bring Attorney General's office in here, I'll prove all of it to you. Yeah, the lab, what happened, what they did here?
All right, Bill Emery, I'm from Bolton. I'm gonna break my own promise to myself. I haven't gotten up here and spoken in about two years. But I got a few items, one of them very dear to my heart. We've been talking about it for a long time, and it's the flooding that's been going on in town. And every time we get some heavy rain, we get flooded out. We just had one here recently over the last week, and we got flooded out again. Council, you guys got to stop sitting on your hands. You got to stop letting the state walk all over you. Ms. Councilman Zabaka, you made a comment a little while ago about the state saying something's going to be done over the next three years. They said that three years ago. They said it three years before that, they said it three years before that. Until somebody puts a signature on a piece of paper and puts a bucket in the ground, nothing's going to be done. You guys got to stop getting walked all over. The state is not going to do anything unless you guys literally get up and fight. I'm serious. You guys, I don't want to get like Vic Bryson did over here. I don't want to get nasty like that. But you guys have to get nasty like that with the state of Delaware. You guys got to fight for your people in the city of Newcastle to get out there and get the state doing some work to get the flooding under control. I gave you guys pictures of the dykes out there, the way they were dug. The state came back and told you, that was bull crap. Well, I was here 40 years ago when the dykes were like that. You guys sitting on the council, you guys, four out of, I think, five of you didn't even live in this town when the dykes were like that. And that did control the flooding, and the state told you it was all crap. Well, I'm telling you, that was crap, right? Enough of that. Couple other items. There's a steel plate sitting in the middle of Delaware Street in front of the Terry House. That plate was there, we re-blacktopped that street, beautiful job. That plate's been sitting in front of the Terry House now for a year. The guys did work out there, and then when they patched the street after their work, they put that plate there. It's still sitting there a year later. I'd like to see somebody look into that to get that done. The streets sweeping, 60 days. You do a warning for a street sweeping, 60 days, the summer's half over. Talk to the guys that actually do the street sweeping, and they'll tell you how long you ought to do the warning for that. It ought to be like two weeks to do warning for somebody to move a car, that's all they need. You don't need 60 days for somebody to move their car, two weeks. Talk to the guys that actually run the sweepers. And then, the light at 6:00 in Delaware, I'm angry. I was against that, and I wrote through there the other night and it was gone. I was shocked. But hey, you guys lost the light, you'll never get a light back now. It's gone forever, so when you decide that you want your light back, good luck with that. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify a clarification about the warning on the street sweeping. It's not that they have two weeks to move the car, it's that in six months, 60 days. It's that we're not going to write tickets, they're going to get warnings.
Right, I know, but that, the summer's half over.
Okay, anyone else?
I just want to actually kind of clear my name a little bit. I know there's a letter going around town saying, "I told you so, we should have raised taxes last year." And that's because discretionary spending goes up. Last year, Mr. Day puts in $60,000 last minute for breathing apparatus. And I said, "Let's raise taxes." And President, you know what you said? "Let's wait six months." And that never happened. So we're back in that same circle. Now, I'm just looking at your budget numbers here, and it looks like overall spending's only up 7.9%. Why do you keep using the number 27% for insurance?
Because that's another, the government's spending.
But overall, but overall, the budget's only 7.9%. That's overall, and we're at a surplus of $200,000 this year. I know we can't live off savings either, but let's cut out discretionary spending. Let's start putting the money into the budget so that citizens know where it goes, okay? If we're going to give the fire department, which they're not part of the city, everybody should know that. They're their own LLC, but we need them, and if we have to pay them, pay them. I was the last volunteer firefighter in the city of Chester before they went completely paid. So I've been through this cycle. Second off, I watched a budget meeting this morning, and I was actually extremely disturbed by how it happened. You allow the mayor to sit at the council table and just join in council conversation? That is bizarre. We run by Robert rules here. You are in charge. I can't speak to you unless you give me permission. The chair should always ask, you should always ask the chair for permission. She is not part, the mayor, is not part of council, should not, should not be in part of the conversation, should not be sitting at that table, not part of it, not part. You go way back, no other mayor in this town did it. Last guy that did it was Jack Claymire, and the Attorney General's office did come in, and they clipped his wings pretty hard. And lastly, Mr. Telly, I think I said that right. I did a little research on you, and one thing I truly liked was that you kind of like to use electronics to communicate and email blasts, and I think that was talked about, I hope we continue forward with it, because then we can save upwards of $16,000 by not advertising into Weekly. Them ads, these meetings don't have to be advertised. If you talk to your lawyer, he'll tell you that. Elsmere, Newport, Newark, they don't advertise. We're just wasting money every week, two full-page ads. What a waste of money, guys. That's $15,000. There's something there. And then lastly, pull the dog park, I started that, and that was at $20,000. You took the $65,000 away from Chestnut Street, and the fragility's so freaking high out there, you can't even use the electric chargers. But I guess it's above Third Street, nobody cares. Have a good night.
I just wanted to comment back on Mr. Emery's comment. I was just looking in the meantime on the Delta's website, and FY '25, FY '31, the plan has been adopted. And about $2 million is estimated cost for the study that's going to happen for what they call, and I'm sorry, SR non-river road area improvements and flood remediation. So that's just, I know that this has been told five years in a row, but I think this is the first one we've actually made for the thought your plan is.
And we've been on this plan for a little while.
No, we've not ever made it before.
We've never made it to national. This is when the money is tied up to the project, so this is when things are happening. This is on a public Delta website, I'm reading.
And it's allocated for somewhere in three years, but it's not on a calendar year.
It's on a calendar, it says that FY '25 has, sorry, just a second.
It's in a window.
Nope, it's three years in a row. So first year is FY '25, which is coming right now, $200,000, $160,000 FY '26, $250,000 FY '27.
So they're spending the money so much here, so much here, so much here.
That's part of the three years' worth of study they're going to conduct. And then I think FY '28, hopefully, we can have engineering study completed and budgeted, you know, improvements for that area.
But they're not saying the shovels going in the ground in 2028, or they're just doing engineering.
But it's, what they told us in this meeting is that the fact that we're now part of the formal plan, the chances of not getting funded later are very low. I mean, that only depends on the budget now being drafted at state level. But if you're at this stage right now, that we're at right now, for this particular project, which is amazing, not the timeline, sorry, the fact that we're there, this step, means that if everything goes on the state-level budget-wise, FY '28 probably are looking at shovels in the ground. And a little bridge or whatever solution is, is being, you know, implemented there. So I cannot speak for what's going to happen in the state budget, but that is almost completely fair trust. But we have never been with this project at this stage.
The fact that they're spending the money is promising.
Yeah, this is, I have money, so once the July 1 comes and the budget is voted in at state level, this is done, this is done deal. So just wanted to respond that it's not the same as before, because before we're always, that was a priority that we shared with Delta, but it wasn't recommended. But because we had so many closings of the roads, that in the past, they have elevated our analysts to us.
Right, and understand where I'm going, we've had so many promises in the past.
I think we can move on.
Yeah, I know, I understand, I understand.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Phil Gross, 1301 13th Street. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Day, because I, as well as other people, for some reason, we're getting older and our hearing's not as good as it used to be. First, we'll start with funds going to the partnership. Once again, this, as I remember, when I first was a part of the partnership, was supposed to be self-sufficient. So zero money should be going to the partnership. Put it into the Historical Society, where Mr. Conley's doing a phenomenal job. And I think that's money much better spent, so I would take that out of the budget. As far as my complaint with the city not giving the residents a detailed sheet of the proposed budget, this is a semi-detailed sheet from 2022, and this is what we were given today, which is absolutely useless, absolutely useless. Doesn't say anything. So again, I went in this afternoon to give the office an opportunity to give me one. They didn't, so I put in a formal complaint. By next meeting, I'll let you know whether any kind of further action's going to go on. But I promise you, things are being done that are just not appropriate. I think COVID money should be I think COVID money should be spent on a precursor to, uh, projects that can be done to ease the flooding. You heard from a couple people and I've got a list of at least eighty people that have signed a sheet saying that they're having issues with flooding. And I did check with state legislators, not including Senator Poor, who is a yes person. There is zero money, zero money. The Flood Resiliency Group has done nothing in two years to resolve anything. They said, well, we got a promise of two million dollars. Nothing is in the pipeline for at least three years. There will be no shovels in the ground for seven to ten years. And that's a fact. Don't let them tell you otherwise. There's going to be worse flooding. And what's worse is the emergency evacuation routes are going to be flooded and we will not be able to get out. And I hope you guys can explain to insurance companies and mortuaries why there's so many damn people from our city that are caught up because nothing was done now. And I've just got to say, Ms. Sauter, please, please do something.
The other thing I will say is the reason that the state legislature doesn't have money in the budget for this is because the program we're in is a federal program, not a state program.
So spend the COVID money is sorry.
Why should we duplicate what the federal government is willing to do?
They'll reimburse you.
No, they won't. They have to do it with their people.
Just for the record, I want to say that I don't want, um, Anthony and Courtney to take the, the heat for the budget. That was, uh, me, uh, directing to include overall, um, budget items from FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five, just so we have something to share with public in a larger setting to know. Where we are currently and what we're proposing for FY twenty-five, there's definitely, um, a next meeting, budget meeting. So I'm not going to be comfortable to look at the details of our budget there, but, uh, but that, I just wanted to take heed of that. I'm happy to take heed for that, so I guess.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone?
Yep, I didn't start yet. Two, three seconds, Ben. Rod Miller, East Third Street. Okay, I want to talk just a little bit about the budget. I've been trying my best not to go ballistic on everybody because this is all kind of new now and I'd rather get, gather more information and know what I'm talking about first. But let me just start off by saying, I come from New Jersey. One of the reasons you move over here from New Jersey is to get away from the worst property tax in the country. And I'm sure everybody in the room understands you got Tyler Technologies. Anybody want a background on them? Come talk to me. I know these guys very well. I fought against them in Salem, New Jersey seventeen years ago. They did a revow over there. And I really don't think most people in the city have any clue what's going to happen to them. Okay? All you people like me who's just, if this got nothing to do with you, I'm setting, I'm setting it up, right? Uh, everybody's, uh, that's maybe similar to my house, maybe you're assessed somewhere between forty and fifty thousand dollars. Your, your assessments are going to be like between three and four hundred thousand dollars. They're going to assess you for what your property could, could currently sell for. Okay? I became known as the king of the tax appeals over in Salem. Turned into a, a real mess over there. Those guys know me well, so when I see them, they're, they're going to remember me. So having set that up, right? I mean, your taxes are going up anyway, regardless of, of what they can figure out, uh, with this budget. So, um, everybody just needs to prepare themselves. We can argue and fight all, what we want, maybe they'll lower it some, who knows what will happen. But things are changing. Things are changing in the state of Delaware. They haven't done a revow here in forty years. Just might look to move here when they're doing a tax revow. So your local taxes are going to go up anyway because it's all, it's all based on your assessment. Okay? I'm going to pay much more attention to this, uh, you know, budget. I, I did attend a budget meeting you had last week and, uh, our new city administrator's, one of the things I remember coming out of her mouth was basically, you know, not telling you maybe, but kind of suggesting that you should raise taxes. That's not good. That's not a good sign in my opinion. And you all know this without me telling you, but I just want to emphasize it, right? This is not going to fly. This is not going to be, not, not only is it not going to be popular, this is going to be a big issue. Because you've got people here that have never lived through this and have no clue what to experience. Okay? Haven't said all that. Is, is that dog park? Is that part of the current budget? I don't even know how much it's going to cost, I'm just curious.
It is.
It is, okay? How about the playground? I'm hearing rumors now, because I haven't been paying attention, that was all supposed to be paid for. Is there now more work on that that you're expecting the taxpayers to pay for?
No, no, no.
I hope not, I want the answer to be no, right?
All the playgrounds so far has been paid by grants.
Okay, also, look.
That's not true.
But, but, hey, give me my time back, he's talking.
The state put a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand dollars into that last year. And money is taken out of the general, out of, out of budgets for us or out of the grants for us. That money was taken away from.
I get seventeen seconds back, I get seventeen seconds back.
You've had your time.
Well, you can't lie to them either, man, or misrepresent the truth.
Well, it's, it's.
I will, I will tell you more.
Mr. Clay, I don't know how the money was taken out of general fund if it wasn't ready.
Boy, I really touched it off.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but I, I, because it's a fact, we have received a hundred and sixty thousand, a hundred and ten from old dead record bond bill. I don't know how we could have taken money from the general fund, I'm sorry.
The bond bill goes into the general funds.
I understand.
And that money was taken out to go to the playground. It was earmarked personally by Nicole Poor. She told this council how we can spend the money.
So that's what I'm saying.
She told the city how we can spend that power money.
You've had your time.
But we requested that from the city.
Well, you, you can't let it, you can't let it misrepresent the truth either.
It's not, we requested it from.
What do you want, President? We're, we're under public treat case here.
Yeah.
Can we get this?
Mr. Miller's time.
Get back to where we're supposed to.
Oh, thank you, you gave me twelve extra cents, okay. Anyway, look, also, i- in terms of these raised insurance costs, okay? I'm, I'm not saying that, you know, you're not accurate with that. All I'm saying is that, that just sounds, those figures sound bizarre to me because health insurance costs have been going up for fifteen years. Our, our taxes here haven't gone up a nickel in six, certainly not in eight years I've been here, I'm told sixteen years. Okay? For, for that, for those costs to skyrocket, that percent overnight, you're going to have to explain that to me.
Mr. Miller, I'm sorry for interrupting your, uh, public speaker.
Okay, I'll just say that we heard that our employee plans are part of the state plan. And the state plans, all of them, have gone up dramatically this year. Yes, they've been increasing year to year to year, but this is a, there's some changes in the rules and that led to this dramatic increase. And it was, it was a state level thing, not something we.
I believe it's that, that, that's more than dramatic, that's, that's going to have to be discussed. I mean, change isn't going to have to be made, that's, that's insane.
Well, it's everybody dealing with state crimes with the University of Delaware and all the cities are facing the same issue. Okay, anyone else with public comments? Okay, thank you all. Um.
Wait a minute.
Oh.
My name's Dave Connell, I used to live at seven twenty-five Clymer Street. Been forced into the streets on the homeless body actions of one of the employees. But, uh, uh, anybody know what Love Canal is? There's like dozens and dozens and dozens of videos on Love Canal and it's up there in Niagara Falls, New York. And it gives great detail on the effects of superfund sites and human beings, especially kids. I'd recommend checking them videos out. Also, I'm from Western Pennsylvania, a town called Rochester. And they had signs up all through the town. I got dozens of tickets for not moving my car when they were sweeping. Couldn't miss it. You had no argument with it because the signs were posted. I don't know what the argument is there. Now, why I'm here, as usual, is, uh, there is a structure, seven twenty-seven Clymer Street, that is built in such a fashion that I consider it to be a super-sized fire bomb with a flamethrower attachment on the roof. But there's a bigger flamethrower attachment across the street in seven hundred block of Center Street. All this was dealt out by, I, I, I don't know about Center Street, but my house, in our block, yeah, building permit was issued. I complained about it. Mr. Bursham said, well, you're the only complaining, it's about to change. And, uh, he, he gave a certificate of occupancy to it, which puts every man, woman, and child in that entire city block at risk of being burned alive in their own homes. Let alone their houses burned to the ground. This thing is built in such a way to burn that block at an expedience. Now, somebody explained to me, maybe the state fire marshal or something, which is a guy from Newark, I think that's where Jeffrey's from, we surprised to know each other. Explain to me how this is not, why, why there's no firewalls on this structure. You're going to build a six-story building there, I couldn't care less, honest, ten-story building, if there was firewalls. I don't think anything in the entire building's been inspected. I don't care if there was firewalls, but there's no firewalls. This thing's built to burn, burn the city block down. Uh, now, we as an organization and I personally do not pursue punitive measures, whether it be civil or criminal, we just don't do that as an organization. I handle it in different ways. I would like to speak, I'm terrible at names and I'm sure I'll botch your names. Is it possible we sit down and meet and talk about this? I'm a reasonable person, I try to do the right thing. You know, this, this, this is terrible, risking everybody's life like this. It's ridiculous. That whole block and the other block, the whole neighborhood's balloon ceiling construction. You broke the plane in the second floor, you put a massive combustible pile of material on top of it. It's, uh, it's out of control. I'm not going to badmouth anybody anymore, it's just a situation. I'll email them, can't get, get ahold of you. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Anyone else? All right. Um, the next item on the agenda is the change to the board of health composition. We're going to have to pass on, pass over that one tonight. Um, inadvertently, it wasn't properly announced for the public hearing, so we'll be dealing with that next month. Um, and so the next item is a discussion. Well, that was the second reading and then item two. And also, the next item for a possible board of adjustment appointment, um, we do not have a candidate for that for tonight, so we're passing over that one. The next thing then is the discussion on resolution twenty-four dash, twenty twenty-four dash eighteen for a subdivision for a property known as nine oh seven Gray Street. Um, council has a packet containing the resolution and a map showing the property. I will read the resolution and then we'll go from there. Um, so, resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen, a resolution approving the subdivision for a property known as nine oh seven Gray Street, parcel number twenty-one dash zero one four point zero zero dash two one one. Whereas Michael Dorf and Leah Justice have applied to the Council of Newcastle for subdivision approval for a property known as tax parcel twenty-one dash zero one four point zero zero dash two eleven within the city limits. And whereas the planning commission has reviewed the application under the terms of the subdivision regulations and zoning ordinances and has determined that the application is in conformity with the same and has therefore recommended to city council that the subdivision be approved. And whereas the council determines the application meets the necessary requirements for the approval of this subdivision as shown on the attached exhibit A, now therefore be it resolved that the application of Michael Dorf and Leah, Leah Justice for subdivision approval for the property known as nine oh seven Gray Street, parcel number twenty-one dash zero one four point zero zero dash two eleven within the city limits as shown hereby on a plat prepared by the PLSA company dated March sixth, twenty twenty-three and updated June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three and attached hereto as exhibit A, reflecting such subdivision is approved and such plat shall be entitled to be recorded in the Office of Newcastle County Recorder of Deeds. The subdivider shall record the subject subdivision within forty-five days of the date of this resolution and inform the building official of the exact place of the recordation within that office. Failure to record the subdivision within the aforementioned timeframe shall render this resolution null and void. Um, is there anyone here? Ms. Dorsey with a, um, is your, um, sort of engineering. Okay, Ms. Dorsey, do you have anything to say to us about this?
No, basically, it's one lot and they're subdividing it into two lots. Um, the one lot contains an existing dwelling, the other one will be available for a longer time.
So this change does not affect any other properties?
Yeah.
When you say building lot, you, you mean just what's a lot of an occurring incidental zoning event? And that's true.
Is this a, like a, like a by right type of situation in terms of the, uh, the, the lot change?
I do know they had to get variances approved and where the judge is.
I'll, I'll answer the question. It wasn't a by right, it's a board of adjustment grant, the variance is now it's by right.
I'll go with a motion to vote on it with amendment to what council president already noted in her reading, but not in writing in the last sentence. Failure, do you report just to be changed, failure to record?
Oh, right, yeah, the last sentence, change the to two.
Right after failure, yeah.
The la, the final.
It was quickly read.
The final sentence, yes.
Was that correct motion?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's just an amendment, you're right. I corrected it sort of automatically as I read, but it should be corrected officially. So, um, okay, so this is now a by right, um, subdivision because the board of adjustment approved the variance, is that correct? Well, all right, so, um, the motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, the motion is adopted, or the resolution is approved. Okay, the next item is a discussion and motion on twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, which is another, um, property adjustment. Um, twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, a resolution approving a site plan for a property known as the Crozier Fine Art Storage Facility, parcel twenty-one dash zero one three point zero zero dash one one four. Whereas Iron Mountain Information Management LLC has applied to the Council of Newcastle for site plan approval for a property known as tax parcel number twenty-one dash zero one three point zero zero dash one one four within the city limits. And whereas the planning commission has reviewed the application under the terms of the zoning ordinances and has determined that the application is in conformity with the same and has therefore amended, recommended to the city council that the site plan be approved. And whereas the council determines the application meets the requirements necessary for the approval of this site plan as shown on the attached exhibit A. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of Iron Mountain Information Management LLC for site plan approval for property known as Crozier Fine Art Storage Facility, parcel number twenty-one dash zero one three point zero zero dash one one four within the city limits as shown hereby on a plan prepared by Frederick Ward Associates dated April first, twenty twenty-four and attached hereto as exhibit A, reflecting such site plan is approved and such plan shall be entitled to be recorded in the Office of the Newcastle County Recorder of Deeds. The applicant shall record the subject site plan within forty-five days of the date of this resolution and inform the building official of the exact place of recordation within that office. Failure, and again, we need to correct the record, failure to record the site plan within the aforementioned timeframe shall render this resolution null and void. Um, is, are you involved with this one also, Ms. Dorsey?
No, that's me.
Oh, okay. Um, it looks like this is in addition to an existing facility in the Center Point Building, office car.
Yeah, it's in storage space.
Okay. Um, and do you have any comments, Ms. Dorsey?
No.
Okay, any questions from council? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion is adopted, the resolution is approved. Okay, and the next item is a resolution to extend the existing outreach coordinator position through August of twenty twenty-four. Um, I will read the resolution and then have a suggested change to it, which I'll talk to you about after a meeting. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty, a resolution to extend the existing outreach coordinator position through August of twenty twenty-four. Whereas pursuant to resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero eight, the City of Newcastle, the. the City of Newcastle City Council earmarked a portion of the American Recovery Plan Act funding to create a one-year contract position, which it called the Tourism and Economic Recovery Coordinator. And whereas, resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero eight also outlined the position's responsibilities, providing for a portion of the earmarked funds to be used as a marketing budget for producing tourism-related materials, and appointed the city administrator to manage the contract position. And whereas, the city entered into a contract with a contractor for a one-year term commencing on July first, twenty twenty-three, and concluding on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And whereas, the initial contractor resigned effective February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, and the City Council identified a suitable replacement to complete the remainder of the contract term, and approved the replacement at the March twelfth, twenty twenty-four City Council meeting. And whereas, the March twelfth, twenty twenty-four City Council renamed the position to outreach coordinator, authorized any remaining funds from the ten thousand dollar budget earmarked in resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero eight for producing tourism-related materials, may be used more broadly for direct expenses relating to promoting and supporting Newcastle, including design, technical, advertising, subscription and membership fees, printing and setup costs, et cetera, and directing the outreach coordinator to report to the mayor for the remainder of the contract term, ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And whereas, the City Council desires to extend the contract of the outreach coordinator through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, to allow the outreach coordinator to finish remaining work, subject to funding as outlined in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the position outreach coordinator shall be extended through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, pending the passage of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget, in order to allow the outreach coordinator to finish the remaining work that began in March through the end of the summer of twenty twenty-four. The outreach coordinator will be compensated in accordance with the passage of the fiscal twenty twenty-five budget, and funds budgeted for producing tourism-related materials may be used more broadly for direct expenses related to promoting and supporting Newcastle, including design, technical, advertising, subscription, and membership fees, printing and setup costs, et cetera. That the outreach coordinator will continue to report to the mayor for the remainder of the contract term, ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. I've received from the mayor a request that instead of August of twenty twenty-four, we consider extending it to September of twenty twenty-four. And the reason for that extension is due to two major events in September, the Belgian Beer Fest and Ardon Green. So this would allow, if we decide on this extension, it would allow the outreach coordinator to promote those two significant events. So, now it will be solved for council discussion, whether we want to do it off, whether we want to do it through August, whether we want to do it through September.
It's gonna be advertised.
Excuse me, the public comment period is completed, Mr. Pla.
It's illegal. Max? Okay.
All right, Mr. Badaewa, I believe you have a comment?
Thank you, Council President. I think the individuals and the work that they have exhibited is tremendous, and one could wonder how they were able to do so much in so little time. It's hard working on something and knowing that, you know, your job or what you're doing may get cut, you know, in a short period of time. I, I've actually moved to amend the amendment to have this position run through December twenty twenty-four.
Okay, um.
I'm in agreement with that. Now, let's do a spirit Christmas.
All right, yeah, this, this resolution does make this contingent upon the funding in the budget. So even if we approve this tonight for whichever date we decide upon, it still has to go through the budget process. So this does, this resolution does not allocate funds, it simply authorizes the position should the funds be included in the budget, as I understand it, is that everyone else's understanding? Okay.
Well, the language in it, yeah, can I ask a question of Max?
Sure.
I, I just wanted to know, before I even give a comment on this, um, if we're to renew this, does there need to be a position open from, from the city for?
It's a contract position. A contract position?
I understand, but even for contracts, we're sending RPs for, for.
You're just extending a contract.
So this is just an extension?
Just extending a contract, okay.
Excuse me.
And there's no time limit to that extension? Like, this would be beyond December?
Good, I mean.
But actually hypothetically, right?
Hypothetically, yes.
What we're about to say is that.
But the resolution just gives an intent, because there's no, there right now, so you know I'm hurting the fun, I got the next meeting?
I understand. Thank you. I, I don't know the timeline, to be honest, right now, I, I wasn't thinking about beyond August, when I saw the resolution, but I definitely can see the merit for it to be extended to September to account for those two events happening in September, to make sure that we have appropriate coverage as it relates to this. And that applies us some time to reevaluate and reassess this position, because I'm assuming we would do an annual, you know, performance review, and I agree with, with, you know, I, I, every, every comment and suggestion I have made, you guys have taken seriously and gotten back to me, whether it's positive or negative, but you have explored it. I'm not saying I have good ideas, I'm just saying that I appreciate you guys looking into these things, getting back to us and making sure the city has a good branding. So, so I don't have issues with September or, or December, but at some point, I would like us to have a formal review. Before we go into.
So, can, can I just suggest that you keep it in August, you can always revisit, right? And then we'll get the funding straightened up, and we'll prepare for additional terms or whatever.
Yeah, I was just about to say, it would be nice to have like a formal review of this.
Yeah, it's a short-term extension in weak circumstances.
So, what I, Mr. Walton is suggesting that we approve this, if we're going to approve it, we do so as written, with the August thirty-first termination date, because by then, the budget will be, have been passed, and if we want to extend it further at that point, we always have the option to do that if we provide for it in the budget. Does that seem reasonable to everyone?
I'm gonna do that, this, I have to agenda for, you know, August or even July, just so we can discuss.
Put it on the agenda, Charlie.
You know, so we don't forget about it, but, you know.
Well, I think we'll send it with the budget decision.
Yeah, the decision's gotta be made with the budget, not with.
I, I understand, but just so we can have, have this presented to us, so we can evaluate the position, what's been done, and decide on, you know, whether or extension of the, and I, I'm in agreement with what everybody's saying.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve this resolution as written, to express the intent to extend the outreach coordinator position through August thirty-first, contingent upon funding being placed into the budget?
Motion to approve.
All right, and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And for, passed. All right. And the final item for tonight is a first reading of an ordinance regarding zoning code. I will read the ordinance, and as usual with the first reading, there's no discussion. We will hold a public hearing on this at a future date, and then have a discussion and vote. Ordinance five forty-eight, an ordinance to amend the City of Newcastle Municipal Code, Chapter two thirty, zoning code, regarding minimum lot frontage and wetlands. Whereas, the Council of the City of Newcastle, City Council possesses the authority to adopt, amend, modify, or repeal the City of Newcastle Municipal Code, City Code. And whereas, the City Council believes that legal lots should have direct access to a street. And whereas, the City Council finds that adopting a maximum coverage ratio for wetlands, whether titled or non-titled, would discourage the creation of unusable lots. And whereas, the City Council has determined that it is in the best interest of the city and its residents to amend the City of Newcastle Municipal Code to specify a minimum lot requirement for lot frontage in each zoning district, to clarify the definitions of lot, lot frontage, and lot of record, and to establish a maximum coverage ratio for wetlands on lots. Now therefore making the express finding that the provisions of this ordinance enhance and promote the health, safety, and welfare of the City of Newcastle, being ordained by the Council of the City of Newcastle as follows. Section one, City Code, Chapter two thirty, zoning code, attachment one, schedule of district regulations is hereby amended by adding a new column titled Minimum Lot Frontage as follows. And there's a chart for each zoning district and how much minimum lot frontage. And I'm not gonna read the chart, but I will say that it requires twenty-five feet of lot frontage on lots in all zoning districts except residential, and in residential, it requires twenty feet of lot frontage.
Only R three, all the other residential are twenty?
Right, the R three residential, excuse me, yes, only R three residential. All other zoning classifications are twenty-five feet. Section two, City Code, Chapter two thirty, zoning code, Article one, terminology, section two thirty dash one, definitions. Lot is hereby amended as follows, with a parcel of land whose boundaries have been established by a legal instrument such as a recorded deed, court order, or a recorded plot, which is recognized as a separate legal unit for purposes of transfer of title. Section three, City Code, Chapter two thirty, zoning code, Article one, terminology, section two thirty dash one, definition. Lot frontage is hereby amended as follows. The portion of a lot along a street line to which the lot abuts. A lot shall have frontage on an improved public street or in the general commercial CG district on an improved public or private street. For the purpose of determining yard requirements of corner yard lots and through lots, all sides of a lot adjacent to streets shall be considered frontage, and yards shall be provided as indicated under yards in this section. Section four, City Code, Chapter two thirty, zoning code, Article one, terminology, section two thirty dash one, definitions. Lot of record is hereby amended as follows. It eliminates a definition that was previously there and simply says seed lot, seed the definition of lot. Section five, City Code, Chapter two thirty, zoning code, Article five, supplementary district regulations, section two thirty dash thirty-five, suitability for development, is hereby amended by adding a new subsection A as follows. No more than eighty percent of a lot's area may be consist, may consist of wetlands, whether titled or non-titled. B, any tract or parcel of land upon which it uses to be located must be physically suitable for development in the manner proposed. No requests shall be granted for any permit or certificate which may result in the creation of hazards to structures, inhabitants, or any property or person from probability of flooding, erosion, subsidence, or slipping of the soil or other dangers, annoyances, or inconveniences. Condition of the soil, groundwater level, drainage, rock formation, and topography shall be appropriate to both kind and pattern of use intended. In instances where, in the administrative official's opinion, there is doubt as to the sustainability for development, he may require the applicant to submit engineering data supporting the application. Section six, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held to be unconstitutional or invalid, such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section seven, in the event any existing ordinances or parts of ordinances are in conflict herewith, the provisions of this ordinance shall control. And that's the end of the treaty. So, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Council President?
Yes.
I just heard publicly, there was a lot of words, and I wanted to give the intent just really quickly. Essentially, the way the code was written, there could be these orphaned redland parcel, essentially made into a separate parcel, and tapped it a couple of times. The idea is to change the definition, so you can't have a portion of the parcel which is only just redland, right? It has to have to develop a whole, that's, that we amended the definition as such. This will need to be, this ordinance will need to be reviewed by the planning commission, so we'll not come back.
And not right away?
Not right away.
Oh, that's right, because it's so, okay. So, it will now be referred to planning for their review, and then it will come back to us for a public hearing, second reading, discussion, and vote. Thank you, Mr. Walton. Now do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's adjourned.